Just a couple of little sort of housekeeping things first. One, it's difficult to keep concentration with Zoom meetings. So we don't want it to go on any longer than we have to. But please take part in discussions as you wish, but try to keep your contributions as concise as you're able. And then when everyone who wishes to speak has done so, we'll welcome proposals as appropriate. Secondly, when you wish to speak, please raise your hand. And I will try to ensure that this is noted. The host will mute you when you are invited to speak. Similarly, please raise your hand when voting, noting or approving an item. If there is any unacceptable behaviour during the meeting, the person concerned will be warned that if it continues, the host will remove them from the meeting. I will now ask those present to raise their hand when I call their name. Councillor Dawson. Councillor Prowse. Councillor Wrigley.
Present.
Councillor Foden. Councillor Taylor. Councillor Mayne. That's for the benefit of anyone looking at the face to the name. Right, and we will start the meeting proper. Apologies for absence. Do we have any apologies?
We don't, Chairman, but I think Councillor Woods is trying to get into the meeting at the current time.
Right, if he joins, we will make a note of the time that he joins. Have we any dispensations?
No, Chairman, we haven't.
Have we had any declarations of interest?
No, Chairman, we haven't.
No. Now, item four, the minutes. I'm sure you've all had time to read the minutes of the last meeting. And I have an apology to make because I didn't ask you to note or approve those minutes. In those minutes, that we had two apologies from Councillor Woods and Councillor James. So I therefore would like you to raise your hands if you agree that we make that amendment, that apologies are put in for Councillor Woods and Councillor James. Thank you. We now have item five, project report. As you know, it's not difficult getting forward with anything, but I'm sure that our projects officer will have something to tell us. Thank you, Angie.
A very brief report, Chairman. I've not been able to make progress on a number of items. Those I have are largely on the agenda. But just to say, the winter decorative planting is due to happen in the next few days down the strand. And that's really the only one to report an update on. A number of projects are currently on hold due to the lockdown and trying to make progress is increasingly difficult.
Thank you. Well, it's good to hear about the winter baskets. That's going to cheer up the strand. Right, item six, Dawlish Waterfowl. It's been a very sad time, very sad time. And again, Angie does have a report for us.
Sorry, Chair, I may have missed it because I'm trying to get Councillor Woods into the meeting. Did you actually vote to approve that report?
I haven't actually seen the report.
No, the report, the previous report, I do apologise.
Oh, sorry. Thank you for that. Yes, to note the project's report. That's me again forgetting. Do we approve or accept the report? Thank you. Right. Item six, Dawlish Waterfowl. Again, a miserable time, but I'm sure that our projects officer will have some more news to tell us.
Thank you, Chairman. As you'll be aware, we've had an outbreak of avian flu. And the town clerk has been liaising with DEFRA, Teambridge Environmental Health and other agencies as required. And obviously, the waterfowl wardens have got an unprecedented situation. Councillor Louden, I think, is joining us as she dropped him out. An unprecedented situation. And obviously, the situation is progressing. We don't know where things will, how things will progress. We currently have another swan put to sleep earlier today, which was a six-year, a six-month-old swan. So we currently have six left, of which one is the daddy swan that is in the compound, who is recovering well. And I understand he's honking well, too, which is a bright note. At the moment, the public have been obviously very upset about what's happening, as I'm sure are councillors, and have been showing that very forcefully on Facebook and other social media. And we have had a stream of donations from the public towards when we are able to restock and also to go towards the veterinary care that is taking place. And as I say, it's unprecedented times, Chair, and I think that's probably the best to say.
Thank you. I'm sure several of you will want to say something about this. Could I just mention that we need to note that Councillor Mary Louden joined us at 19:06, please? And it may be amongst all the other things you wish to say, we might want to think about how we could think about fundraising to restock at some time in the future. I think Councillor Mayne was just picked you to the post. Councillor Mayne?
And as well as the swans, have we lost, what else have we lost? Do you know if we've lost any other animals, any other birds? No, we haven't. And I'd actually like to take this opportunity to send my sympathies to Dawn and the other wardens. I mean, they must be absolutely devastated. And I think we need to send a vote of thanks to him to send a letter or something, because I can't imagine the poor man is, there is, there is everything, can't they? You know, he must be feeling really, really heartbroken over this. And we're going to have to go forwards. We've got donations coming in. That's going to go towards the vet bills and hopefully restock in. I just think it's, it's so, so sad, so sad. But it could have been a lot worse than it is. I just can't believe that something like this has happened at the times we're in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Mayne, Councillor Wrigley and then Councillor Prowse.
I was going to say very much the same thing with sending thanks and concerns to the wardens because they are very much, you know, you see them when the birds are hatching and they are very much like new parents with hatched fledglings. And they are very invested in the beasties they look after for us. And I think our vote of thanks and sympathies should go out to them.
Councillor Prowse?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Well, I agree with everything that's been said and I would like to put this note into the pool that we have recovered before because I've been a councillor when we've had avian flu before and we have lost a great, great deal and we have recovered. And I know that we will. Can I ask you, Angie, is the CAM that we had looking at the swans, is it still operating? Or have we, has, has that gone to look at something else?
The CAM is currently directed in a way away from the brook and it has been pointing out to sea, et cetera, which seemed the most sensible thing to do at the current time.
Well, thank you. Anyway, thank you. I'm sure we will recover and I know how everybody feels.
Thank you, Councillor Prowse. Anyone else? Councillor Louden and then Councillor Foden. Councillor Louden?
Yes, okay. Apologies for arriving late, but I was here trying to get on at about 25:02. I don't know what it is. It's happened again with my iPad. So I had to come and get on my computer. So that is the reason. Yes, I agree that we should send a formal vote of thanks and sympathies to Dawn and the warden. I've already sent personal ones to them. I think it would be nice to come from the group.
Thank you, Councillor Louden. When I mentioned the time you arrived, it was only meant to follow protocol that we do need to...
No, I understand, I understand that.
Councillor Foden?
Thank you. Yes, I'd just like to echo what others have said to record my thanks to both Dawn and Steve, the waterfowl wardens, and to thank them for all the extra training that they've undergone, following all the guidance from DEFRA and the Chief Veterinary Officer. And to thank them and send good wishes at this really difficult time for them.
It seems that everyone is thinking along the same lines. If anyone would like to make a formal proposal, please do. Otherwise, yes, I was going to say I can make them from the chair, but yes, carry on, Ross.
I think that, Chairman, the proposal was already made by
Councillor Mayne.
Sorry, it was Councillor Prowse, just asking Councillor Prowse to unmute.
You're still muted.
I will second that.
Right. So I think we all agree. We know that the waterfowl wardens must have been broken-hearted over this. And I'm sure that several of us, if not all of us, have already sent our own thoughts. But it's a good idea that the committee as a whole expresses our concern and our thanks. Thank you. Are you happy to move on to item seven?
You formally took a vote?
Yes, I know. So we all agree then, would you vote that we do send this letter of thanks and condolences, if you like? Councillor Taylor? Yes, thank you. All agreed. Moving on to item seven, decorative lighting. Oh, we do have some fun with this, or at least I don't think that our projects officer would call it fun. She's fighting like mad and I know that she's got yet another report.
Thank you, Chair. Three lots of lights, four lots of lights to report on. The brook lights. We believe the brook lights were being tested because they went on last night. And but unfortunately, they don't seem to be on tonight. So we're not sure whether testing was, was taking place or a timer set slightly later. The town clerk has had a communication from Teambridge before the lights were switched on, indicating there was a cost of £150 for electric, £800 for a survey to check the lights were okay, and then £2,200 for remedial and related works. And Teambridge had requested a contribution from the town council towards those costs. And the town clerk was, would be grateful for the committee's view on that this evening, although it's not on the agenda as a particular item, but it would be helpful in his discussions as to what to proceed, what would be minded from the committee to proceed. The town clerk had, had an initial opinion that the contribution that might be made from the town council would be perhaps towards the survey of £800 and the cost of £150 for the electric as a suitable contribution. But as I say, would welcome a steer from the committee this evening.
Do you tell us what that total cost was, please, Angie?
There would be £950.
For everything that they listed?
Basically, it was £2,200, so it would be £3,150. And that's just to have the lights on for this, this year, okay? So as I say, that's, that's the first item. Perhaps if I just go through and then the committee can take us.
I've made a note of that, so I'll bring that up separately, yeah.
The festoon lighting, which is the Christmas lighting, I've spoken to the contractor and even though they're in Manchester, they anticipate being with us at the end of the month, if not sooner, to put our lights up, as we are aware of local places that can put them up if need be. The other Christmas lighting is the Christmas tree. And although not technically under this committee, it may be helpful for the committee to know that we are 99.99% having a Christmas tree with lights adjacent to the bandstand in sometime in early December.
And that will be part of the events committee?
It is, but it might be useful for the committee to know in terms of the actual lighting.
Clarifying.
And the final part of the request to the committee was to approve up to £300 to put fairy lighting round the waterfowl compound. And that was because we cannot light the Brunswick tree. The waterfowl wardens are in agreement with this happening as long as it's not flashing lighting.
Right, and councillors, let's take the item of the brook lighting first. I, I believe that there are going to, there's going to be ongoing discussions longer term. What we're talking about at the moment is getting them on for now. Yes, I think Councillor Wrigley just picked Councillor Dawson to the post.
Thank you. Well, I'm very pleased that these have come on after I've pushed this at Teambridge as, as requested at the last meeting. It did seem to be going absolutely nowhere until I waited in, which is slightly disturbing because it should have been, should have been happening at Teambridge, not for lack of trying from our office, I must, must add. To me, it seems reasonable that we would think about contributing to the electricity costs. And as the clerk has suggested, perhaps contributing to the, the survey costs. Although had they not switched them off, then that wouldn't have, wouldn't have happened. I don't think it's reasonable for us to think about at this stage contributing to the, the refurbishment costs as part of getting them running. That is something really that Teambridge should be taking responsibility for. It is their asset after all. So it's, it's, I think the clerk's suggestion was, was a good one and I would, I would, I would support that.
Would you be rounding that up to the thousand?
I wouldn't be starting with that. I would be saying, you know, we'll pay for the electricity and half of the survey costs is my opening bid.
Right, okay. Councillor Dawson and then I'll come to you, Councillor Prowse. Councillor Dawson?
I just wanted to say thank you to Councillor Wrigley for taking that drum to Teambridge. It's a shame that we've gone all summer, but better late than never. I think the costs seem, well, far too high, far too high. The electricity is one thing and a gesture towards the other costs, the, towards the £850. But as Councillor Wrigley said, I don't think we should be paying any more than that. Teambridge benefit greatly from the, all the wonderful visitors that we get to the town as well through car parking and things. So it's, it's about sharing that responsibility of finance, I think.
Thank you, Councillor Dawson. Councillor Prowse?
Yes, I am concerned about the, the cost of this, especially as, as the was turned off and now we've got to have it surveyed again. I think that's a very unfair amount to ask. What concerns me even more is looking into the future. Is it possible that we will then eventually be asked to take over the whole of the lighting on the brook? Because it seems to me that Teambridge are gradually withdrawing their responsibility towards the town and the things that we have in the town that make Dawlish. And without people coming to Dawlish and spending their money, as Councillor Dawson has just said, Teambridge wouldn't get so much money out of us. So is this a step in the wrong direction or something that we must be very aware of in the next financial year?
Would anyone else like to speak on this? Would Councillor Taylor and then Councillor Mayne?
Thank you, Chair. I do feel that Dawlish does benefit from these, from these lights. Obviously, Teambridge does too through the additional parking and trade in the car park trade that we, that we, that we get. But I think as, as an asset that, that serves both the town and the district, then it is reasonable for us to pay something towards it. And I don't, I don't balk at the prospect that, that's, that some of the charges that have applied could reasonably be, reasonably be paid. Certainly the electricity costs, that was an ongoing running cost that Teambridge felt couldn't, couldn't be covered, which is understandable given the situation we, we, we are in at the moment. We as a, as a nation and as a species, I guess, too. But so getting back to just what's going on in Dawlish, I do feel that some cost towards the survey, which would be useful in any case, would, would be appropriate.
Thank you, Councillor Taylor. Councillor Mayne?
I'm a little bit upset by this actually because we've been without the lights on the brook all summer. And if we'd known that we would be asked to pay towards it, we could have paid towards it at the start of the year and not paid towards it now. And I'm definitely against paying the £2,200 for the survey. I'm actually, I think to pay the electricity cost is fine for that, but I don't think we should be paying any more than that. We've gone all summer without lights. And if this came up to us in May, we might have thanked, oh, well, I would have considered spending the fall of May, but not now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Mayne. I would just make a mention myself, I will speak to you now, Angie. And that is that we don't have any idea when we say we're going to pay for the electricity. As far as I know, at this juncture, we don't have any details as to how many hours for how many days or how many weeks. And I think that needs clarification even over this period because we can't spend a limitless amount. We have to know where we are. Yes, Angie?
Yeah, I mean, if I, if I may, I think I might just recap. The £150 cost is for the electric and we understand that's based on previous years' usage of the lightings at this Christmas period. So it is a figure that's a sound, I think of it as my understanding. The £800 was for the survey and the £2,200 was for remedial work. So there's the three separate costs of going on. And I believe that it's quite possible that they may have to do a survey every so often anyway. It may have been obviously because they switched off the lights, but it may be something they would do at this point in the year that I cannot be certain of.
Right. Does anyone else want to say anything before I ask if anyone wishes to make a proposal on this? Councillor Mayne?
Am I right that if the lights go on now, they will stay on? Or is it just for the Christmas period? Because if, if, if it's the case that they go on now and they stay on, and even though I don't want to, I don't think it's fair to pay a lot of money towards it, that's not so bad. But if it's only for a month or six weeks, then I think it's ridiculous.
Councillor, oh, sorry, I'll let Angie in first and I'll come to you, Councillor Wrigley.
Councillor Mayne, my understanding is it would be as in previous years, they go on for a period of time and then would go off. They normally would coincide with our Christmas lighting, which would go off and then they would come back on the Easter period. My understanding is the, the reason the cost is so high is they are not modern LED lighting.
The actual running cost isn't that high, is it really? But Councillor Wrigley, I saw you, Councillor Taylor, but Councillor Wrigley first.
Thank you. I think once the principle that we are contributing and actually doing this in conjunction with Teambridge, we need that dialogue open to get to the bottom of all these questions and to establish a pattern of what we want and what we're willing to pay for. So I don't see this as a final scenario. This is just get the things switched back on again now. And let's talk about how we can manage them in the future and what we are willing to put our hands into our pockets for and what we aren't. And I think there's a balance to be found there.
Thank you, Councillor Wrigley. And before I go to Councillor Taylor, could I just ask a projects officer, has the clerk clarified the amount that we can agree on from CAC? Or whether, if it's over a certain amount, I think it's over 2,000, has to go to FNG?
That's correct. And I think the clerk was only anticipating a maximum contribution of 950. And as I said, he was asking for a steer from the committee, but that was the maximum contribution he was sort of looking for.
I just wanted to clarify for anyone watching how much we can agree and how much has to go further through the system. Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to propose that we offer the £150, the electricity cost, half the cost of the survey, which is 800 and something, Angie, I think. 800. On the, but on the understanding that the lights, not, don't just come on for Christmas. They stay on throughout those dark months of January and February when people's morale is probably a low ebb and certainly will be this year. I think, I think it brightens up the town. I think it's an enormous benefit to the town to have those lights on. Yes, we should have, they needed to be turned off in, in respect for the November remembrance times. But, but that would, that would be my proposal. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Sorry, thank you, Councillor Wrigley, but I was going to ask Councillor Taylor to clarify what the amount is that he's talking of.
So an amount of £400 plus £150 towards electricity. 400, half the survey, which I think is useful, you know, is reasonable going forwards in maintaining the lights to be good enough to be switched on or allowing, if you like, information to come forward as to perhaps other costs that might, that might be required in the future. But certainly the, the electricity costs to, to, to be covered.
So you are talking of £550?
£550 all sold.
I believe that Angie had something to, no, you're fine.
Councillor Foden, then Councillor Dawson and Councillor Mayne all put their hands up immediately.
In the meantime, yes, it was Councillor Mayne first, I think, out of that list.
I put my hand up to second Councillor Taylor. So long as we know that we're only paying £150 for the electricity and half of the survey, then I, then I second it, but Councillor Wrigley's already done it.
And Councillor Foden? You are muted.
Yeah, I was going to second, but I've been, I've been beaten to it. And I just want to add that after them being switched on yesterday, I've already seen several posts on Facebook from people really appreciating the colour of lights being back on. So it is something that we should do.
Councillor Dawson?
Also, also pitched to the post by Councillor Wrigley. But yeah, I, I, one thing I really did want to press on with Councillor Taylor's proposal there was about keeping them on in those really dark miserable months because they're difficult enough for a lot of people anyway. And particularly at the moment, I think we need to keep anything cheerful that we possibly can.
Councillor Louden, did you wish to add anything? No. Right, so we have a proposal and we have several seconders, thirds and fourths. Would you like to vote, please, on this proposal that we offer to pay the £150 for the electricity and half the cost of the survey? Raise your hands. Thank you, that's unanimous. And I would add myself that this isn't the end of it. We need to be going into further negotiations as to what happens next. And thank you for all your work on that, Angie. Now, the next thing, first, well, I should say, do we approve the report as a whole? And then I will come back to the fairy lighting. Do you all approve the, to accept the report about lighting as a whole? Raise your hands, please. Councillor Louden? Councillor Louden? Are you willing to?
I'm muted. No, I'm not, I don't agree with it.
Okay, so we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven in agreement and one against accepting that report. Right, going back to the items in the report now, we are asked to approve up to £300 on fairy lighting for the waterfowl compound, which I understand is going to be very discreet, but is in an attempt to try and brighten up Brunswick Place. Those, you wish to say something, Councillor Wrigley?
Yes, I propose that we do this and get on with it.
And Councillor Dawson?
I'd second that proposal, please.
Those in favour, please raise your hands. That's unanimous. Is that what you required, I think, Angie? We've noted the update about the brook lights, the festoon lighting. And now we've agreed the fairy light, so we're, we're finished on that one. Is everyone happy to go on to agenda item number eight? Thank you. You'll know that this has come up before. These are these old-style wooden slat benches that were bought by the town council. I believe it was several years ago and we intended that they went along King's Walk. But then we weren't allowed to put them there by But then we weren't allowed to put them there by the powers that be. And since then, they've been sited down on one of the paths down towards Corriton Cove, along down below Lee Mount. However, that section of the path has been closed. And we have an agreement with Timbridge that we've exchanged one of those benches for a modern green one, which is to be sited at Sandy Lane. That was an item first proposed by councillor Woods. And I think it's finally coming into being. The question is what to do with the other, I believe, three, it's two or three. I certainly didn't want to go down in the wet today to find out. You'll see that Timbridge are quoting three hundred pounds to be relocated to Lee Mount. Now, there are bases there already, so it's only a matter of manhandling them up there and fixing them. And we're certainly short of a lot of seats up there. Or they can take them to Timbridge Store for their future use, which is going to cost us approximately one twenty. Yes, Angie first, councillor Wrigley, just in case she's got something to add.
Just to say, as well as the offer that's come back there, that was initially for two. If we go for either of the options for three, it could be slightly more. But as the benches are standing on end and not affixed, the rough estimation, the reply from Economy and Assets at Teambridge was although there are spare plinths up at Lee Mount, there is soon to be another new bench going in there. And my impression is they're not overtly keen on them going up there because they will look very different to the existing ones that are up there. After they have finished the work that they're doing at the moment, there will be seven green benches up there and one plastic one when the latest one goes in. But I got this sort of indication that perhaps they obviously don't want the mix and match. They're trying to keep things, they feel if they mix them up, it could become slightly unsightly in terms of what's there. And I think there was also recognition that the benches are perhaps not of the best.
They're getting on a bit.
Oh, yeah. So just to bear that in mind for making a decision. This is the response to the offer from the last meeting.
So we've got a figure of approximately one hundred and twenty for them to remove them and store them for future use. So would anyone like to open the discussion on this, please? Councillor Wrigley, I think first, then councillor Prowse.
Thank you very much. To my mind, it makes no sense at all to ask Teambridge to take them away because that'll be the last we ever see of them. So we're asking, we're going to be paying them to, to remove them basically, which I think makes no sense. So to me, the sensible approach is to get them up to Lee Mount. And I'm relieved to understand it's not three hundred pounds per bench, it's three hundred pounds for the pair of them or perhaps more if there's three of them. From what Angie said, so I would like to propose that we get them installed up at Lee Mount as soon as possible, get maximum life out of them.
Well, we wouldn't be locating them, but yes, I see what you mean. Councillor Prowse?
Well, I I am unmuted, aren't I? I am concerned about the age of these benches for a start. And if Cambridge are about to put in, how many did you say? Seven new ones?
There's seven green ones up there and there's a new one going in.
So what we're doing is putting up a couple of elderly wooden ones among all these nice smart ones. And I thought we were trying to make the place look better. Personally, if they're wood, and I know what the wooden ones are like, because if you go along the main road, the A three seven nine towards John Nash and over the other side of the road, there were wooden benches there and they rotted through very badly. And we had to do something about that. I either think that we perhaps try to sell them off to somebody who might want a garden bench and could prepare to do them up, or we get rid of them altogether. But we don't want to make, I know councillor Taylor is particularly interested in Lee Mount being a place of interest that people visit. So we don't want it looking all scraggy when it's just been all done up with nice new benches. And wooden benches, I have to say, because I've got them at home here unless they're constantly looked after every year, rot very quickly. So I'm not in favour of them being put on Lee Mount.
I would just draw attention to what we've got here, which is an offer from Timbridge to relocate them for three hundred pounds, but it sounds as if they're not keen on it and councillor Prowse has just made a case. Or for approximately one hundred and twenty to take them to their store for future Timbridge use. They're currently just stacked up where they are on a closed pass, so I just put that into the picture. Anyone else like to discuss this? Councillor Taylor?
Yeah, I'm rather troubled by the thought of paying Teambridge money for our benches for them to use in the future. I'd rather stick them on eBay or if they're not worth anything, to take them down the tip. I'd happily do that myself.
Or leave them where they are, of course. Yes, councillor May.
Maybe Brown Brook Allotments could use them, let them, put them over there. I think they'd be more than happy. I don't see the point of paying somebody to take them away.
Well, we'd still have to pay someone to take them, that's the point. Councillor Dawson? I'll come back to you councillor May. Councillor Dawson?
I think that's a great idea, councillor May. If we can use them rather than paying more money to Teambridge for them to then have our benches, whether they're in good condition or not, if Brownsbrook Allotments would, if that would help enhance their feeling of immunity down there. I think that's a fabulous idea.
Councillor May?
Yeah, I think councillor Moorewood, you said that we'd have to pay for somebody to take them. I'm sure if they were offered to somebody from the allotments, they'd go to the effort of picking them up themselves.
There is not vehicular access there at the moment.
I don't think that would stop anywhere.
No.
Okay.
Sorry, Chair, I'll happily withdraw my proposal if councillor May would like to make that proposal.
Yeah, I would. I would like to propose that we offer them to Brown Brook Allotment, see if they would be happy to collect them and install them themselves and we'd let them have them.
Councillor Prowse? You're muted.
I will second that. I just think, as councillor Dawson said, better to keep them here and councillor Taylor, keep them in the parish. If somebody in the parish can make good use out of them, and that's the way it is, and that's the way forward it should be. Why we should pay a hundred and twenty pounds for them to be moved when we're quite capable of moving things ourselves is quite beyond me.
Those in favour of this proposal, we have a secondo. Those in favour? Carried, I would just say that it's up to the landlord, which is the council, to agree where, if anywhere, they can be placed down at the allotment field. We have current difficulties with boundaries as of now, but it'll be up to the council as a whole. Okay, well, we've sort of sorted that one. Right, is everyone happy to go on to item nine? Well, we've got benches again, benches on the strand. And this has been going on for some time. It's an unfortunate situation. We know members of the public are concerned that there's been one missing for a long time. And I believe there are periodically problems with another one. And our projects officer Angie has been following this up diligently.
Yes, chairman. This actually predates to a situation in two thousand and fourteen when it was proposed after the strand refurbishment, et cetera, that the benches should be taken on by Dorlish Town Council. At the time, the council was minded to do so as long as certain information was provided by Devon County Council and Tewage District Council. However, that information was never forthcoming. And so informal agreement was never signed for Dorish Town Council taking any responsibility, formal responsibility for the benches in the strand. Last summer, one of the benches was quite clearly beyond repair and quite dangerous, which was outside Boots. It had been hit by vehicles. And at that time, not in full awareness of the history, we dismantled the bench and took it out of circulation. Since then, we've gone back and trawled through the correspondence and found the situation is that the town council does not have responsibility for the benches. And the town clerk wrote in February twenty twenty to Devon County Council asking them to carry out remedial work on the two remaining benches in the strand. Until recently, we had had no further correspondence. And in seeking to push the matter and find out when the work would be carried out, we have been informed that the department that installed them has no responsibility for maintaining them. And believed that the town council did based on paperwork, which as I said, was not progressed. And we have now gone back to them and asked them to see what further action they might be able to take with a different section within the county council. As the benches are obviously used by members of the public outside the, outside that area of town. But as I say, the town clerk wrote quite a formal letter in February. And we've been pushing very recently to try and update the situation. But they are not formally under agreement with us and therefore would not be covered under our insurance or anything like that. So it's just to note an update as to where we are at the current time.
Thank you. If anyone would like to say anything before we agree to note it, yes, councillor Prowse?
I presume I am unmuted.
The host is unmuting you.
Thank you. I remember this of old. Yes, Angie, I think the most important thing of all is to note that we haven't got any insurance on them because they're not our responsibility. And I think, well, I know that this has been going on, as you say, from two thousand and fourteen when the strand was refurbished. I think that's the most important thing to highlight, that there is no insurance. If somebody's sitting on one of those and something happens, we, the town council, are not responsible.
Right, are we happy to note that report, please? Can you raise your hands? Thank you. Item ten, Brownsbrook Allotments to receive and note an update. Do we have an update? Angie?
There is no update.
Nothing received. We move on to item eleven, town and parish audit. I would say that it's been very disappointing. We've had very little input from councillors and it went out to all councillors. And particularly when we're talking about, or we were asking for information about any signs which were obsolete, obstructing anything, dangerous or unnecessary. And that was on behalf of the local beat manager. We've had very little in the way of replies. However, our projects officer has circulated the roadsweeper list to us and she's had some responses to that. I will pass you on now to Angie.
Thank you, Chair. We had some responses to the roadsweeper requests from, for example, councillor Dawson, yourself and a couple of other councillors. And they've been afforded to the gentleman involved with roadsweeping and they'll be hopefully added in the near future. The rest of the information on the town audit is currently being processed as to the relevant parties. I know councillor Prowse also raised a particular issue as well.
Councillor Prowse?
Yes, Angie, it was a little bit more complicated than just sweeping our path all round there. Because this is an area that nobody ever sees, it's become incredibly run down. And I know it's very difficult because the, I don't know what you call them, because they're not the landlords, but the people in the nineteen seventies who were responsible for all this were based somewhere in Surrey and seemed to have completely vanished off the horizon. So, and it's a lot of work really. But I know that Teambridge must accept responsibility for it because they cut the grass in the middle square and occasionally, very occasionally, they cut the hedge round it. But on the whole, residents around here have done everything. But we're all getting older and we, you know, I just wondered whether Teambridge are aware just how rundown it's got.
I believe that this is being pursued via our Devon County Council Highways rep and our Devon County Council councillor Clatterthy. Would you like to add anything to that, Angie? And certainly the matter of the walls up in the estate there. I'm still trying to pursue that. I do know from past experience that Devon County were responsible certainly for some steps and paths. And I was hoping that they would have a terrier map and we would have heard more by now. But everything is up in the air these days. Lowther and then councillor Taylor.
Thank you. And I was just going to bring up the wooden bridge that goes from Brook Street towards the hospital. That the other day was so dangerous because it's full of leaves, wet leaves, very, very slippy. And you know, I've had past experience in the summer of the raising of the non-slip things on it. But that didn't, to me, class as roads. Brook Street has an awful lot of walking traffic down it. And it is used, I think it's most probably apart from the centre of the town, one of the roads that's used mostly in the town. But we don't very, very rarely get a roadsweeper down there. The residents, we all do it ourselves. We dig our weeds out and do the footpath. But the bridge is definitely a concern of mine. And I would like somebody, either Angie or the clerk, to bring that up because it's quite dangerous.
If I can interject, I believe that is one of the items which has been reported previously. I've reported it on your behalf as well. Why on earth they put raised ridges across there, I have no idea. The matter of the roadsweeper, if it's possible for it to get up and down there, would you like to ask our projects officer to add it to the list of possibilities? We're not guaranteed, but we're compiling a list of optional extras if we can get them.
Yeah.
Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Chair. Misleading signs. I have a report of, I had a report of misleading sign. It was elderly people crossing at the, if you were coming up from Alexandra Road up to Barton Hill, you will see a sign on the wrong side of the road saying elderly people crossing. Actually, it should have been the other way around. So I have changed that misleading sign and the two other signs that were above it that were pointing to the hospital and the museum in the wrong direction as well. Just for information.
So you have dealt with those. So they're no longer, they're no longer a problem?
It needed my biggest hammer.
So if anyone else has anything on the signs, I think the audit, well, there is a Devon County site which you can report yourselves. I'm not sure whether we want to keep this one open much longer because there's an awful lot more on the cards at the moment. But certainly if you do have any of these misleading, obscured, dangerous, whatever signs, if you could send those preferably photos in to our projects officer, she can forward them to the beat manager. He is most concerned to get rid of some of these unnecessary signs. Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this town and parish audit? No, are we happy to note the update? Raise your hands. Thank you. Memorial Garden, we've received a note from the volunteers just to give you an update, I think. I hope you've all read it. I hope it cheers you up. And unless, oh, councillor Dawson?
I just wanted to thank you councillor Moorewood. I know you put an awful lot of work into that area along with volunteers. And maybe not blood, sweat and tears, but I know you work incredibly hard there and it looks amazing. And it's a fantastic asset for our town, for a nice calm space. So thank you.
Thank you. But I would just like to, I will pass your thanks on to the volunteers. But I would just like to make it clear that I don't, I'm not involved with that as a councillor. I've been doing that for several years now as daffodil planting, lots of other things, just as a volunteer resident. But I will pass that on. Yes, councillor Prowse, the next, I think?
Well, you've said some of the things that I was going to say, councillor Dawson. And I know as non-chairman at this particular fowl that you have taken the And I know as non-chairman at this particular fowl that you have taken a tremendous interest in that. And it looks absolutely lovely round there. And I must say, I really like the photographs. And I like the fact that you obviously know the names of all the plants. But it does look lovely and it's a credit to you and to all the volunteers.
I think it was councillor Wrigley and then councillor Taylor and then councillor Lowther.
Yeah, I just wanted to add my congratulations to all the volunteers and yourself, Chair, in your other role of helping and looking after that. It does look fantastic as you always manage to make it do so. And I know it takes a lot of hard work from a lot of people to get there. And the report is very welcomed and the picture's fantastic. So thank you very much.
Councillor Taylor, I think, was next and then councillor Lowther.
I did put my hands up really just to applaud the good work that you do there, not as a councillor and also the other volunteers. I took some time last week to go down to the memorial garden and it was a very special place and it's made all the more so by the care and attention that it gets from yourself and the other volunteers. So thank you.
Councillor Lowther?
Okay. Well, I was just going to say how impressed I was when I went down to Layer East on Remembered Sunday. There was not a leaf out of place in the memorial garden. All the pathways, everything, even the road, the lane that runs up was absolutely perfect. And I know that is all to do with the lead of councillor Morehead. And congratulations because it was terrific. And I think we're all looking forward to going and visiting in the spring when the bulbs and everything are out.
I will pass this on to the volunteers left, a lot have got rather old now. Don't pummry off. But I would just pass on a little bit of news. Only today, I was speaking to a Mr Pearson, who's 94, and who, it turns out, worked for the urban district council, did a majority of the planting in the lawn and so certainly in the memorial garden. When he mentioned his lovely fuchsias and I said, how difficult they were, we did have a laugh. But he apparently was responsible for planting the, what's known as the Norway maple, the one nearest the Thatch Cottage. And more recently, I found that the, what looks to be hundreds of years old oak tree was actually planted in 1965 to commemorate the funeral of Sir Winston Churchill. And in last week's Gazette, I forget the number of the page, but at the bottom right hand, there were a whole lot of old photographs around the war memorial. And bottom right was this gentleman on his own laying a wreath. And just behind the memorial, you could see this young sapling. And that was in the 1980s. So it's nice to find a little bit of history. Yes, councillor Prowse?
For another reason, I was looking through a lot of photographs of my years as a councillor and I came across, and the war memorial looked lovely then, when Tom, the previous mayor to me, was having some, it was blessed by the bishop and all the clergy when we put up some plaques for people who weren't killed actually in the war, but died as a result of the war. Because there was a gap for them, because there were a lot of people who died after the war, who weren't necessarily killed there and then, but the things that happened to them resulted in an early death. So I always thought that that was a really nice touch. And it's just that you were talking about it and I came across a load of photographs today.
Well, a friend and myself came to the town council, you will remember this councillor Prowse, in early 2014 to ask permission for volunteers to restore that garden area. And we've been working on and off ever since. It's now getting a little easier. And the lovely thing this year was during the lockdown, probably not so much at the moment because of the weather, but many, many people suddenly discovered that that was a lovely, quiet place to take their exercise, to have a quiet walk, to look at the plants, to listen to the robin. And that's exactly what that land was given, and it was given by Herbert Holman, which was for the erection of a memorial and a walk. And it's lived up to its expectations. Thank you. Right, I think we've come to the end of the meeting.
Note that report, chairman?
Yes. Are you happy to receive and note that update? Thank you. We're coming to the end of the meeting now. So I have asked if councillors, if you'd like to stay for a five-minute chat afterwards. Otherwise, I think we officially now close the meeting. Angie, thank you.